Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everybody, really glad you're here today.
We are, we are also so glad that we have Colin and Julie from our team here today. What's up you guys?
Hello.
Everyone.
We also have a familiar face that some of you guys may know, you've seen her here before, and we have some exciting things to share with her today. Welcome Jill and it looks like Tammy you're popping on too. Hey, hey guys.
Hey.
Welcome. So today we have a special edition of our Get Growing Weekly Work Session. This is a call that we host every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time. This is an opportunity for anyone who is a brand partner to learn ways to grow their Young Living business. And of course, if you are a Get Oiling user, this is an opportunity to dig a little deeper, learn a little bit more about the platform that can help you grow and manage your business. Today, we're going to be talking about some things that are going to be of interest to you, whether you're using Get Oiling or not, and that is because you're a brand partner. It's a little buzz that's been going around, Young Living of late called the 14 Day Reset. We're going to be talking about the 14 Day Reset, chat with folks who are helping make it happen. And we're going to talk about a really cool way that you can not only use, but share the 14 Day Reset. Now, we're going to do just a little bit of housekeeping up here at the top as we always do. I typically go into slides, but we're just going to talk through it. And then Greg has a pretty cool announcement to share, a new feature update. And then we're going to get into chatting with our special guests today. So first things first, like I mentioned, this call is for anyone who is a part of Team Young Living. That means anyone who is in Young Living who loves to share. We're live every week and if you'd like to join us on a live call, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. If you'd like to work together on a call like this one, like someone has signed up to do today, you can go to getoiling.com/websitereview. If you would like to have someone do work for you on your Get Oiling system, you can go to getoiling.com/concierge, meet our team and learn how they can help you grow. So I want to go ahead first and pop things over to Greg, who's going to demonstrate a really cool new feature that we have for those of you who have websites built on Get Oiling. And then we're going to get into some of the really exciting stuff that we're going to share today. I see you guys in the chat, go ahead and introduce yourself, say hello and where you're coming in from as you are joining us. Greg, let me also go ahead and make you a co-host so you can start sharing. Here we go. Yeah, how many of you guys on the call here today maybe show a quick show of hands? Do you have a custom website with Get Oiling? Pop your hand up, let me know if you do, you're going to really like what Greg's about to show you.
Awesome. Thanks, thanks Ashley. So yeah, as you've probably been aware over the last, I don't know, month or so, we've been working on the page builder, making that better. So I'm excited to announce a couple of new things you can do with it. So for those who aren't familiar with the page builder, click on pages under the website menu. And then I'm just going to add a new one here, just pick one of these templates. And I'll show you what's new. So whenever you click to add a section, I'll just add it at the top here. We've recently reorganized this and I think I demoed this a couple of weeks ago to make it a little bit easier to find like a section to add to a page. But you'll probably notice a new interactive section here, this showed up recently. And it's got a couple of fun controls in there that I think a lot of people would like to use. And previously you had to use complicated code and get help from support and all that to make this happen on your site. If you wanted an accordion or a carousel. So I'll show each of these here briefly and I won't go through every little setting on them. But for those of you not familiar, I'll just show you what this is in the preview. If you're not familiar with an accordion, this is, you've probably seen this where you click and expand a section and it goes up and down. So that's, that's kind of what the basics of what an accordion is. But here you can now edit it, you can change, you know, whatever this wants to be, my questions, you know, change the header, change the content, reorder them really easily, determine if it's open or closed by default, add sections, remove sections, you can even come in here and change the style. If you want to use something different, like you've got a custom background color that you want to use. These are not great colors for this, but you can, you know, you can customize that however you'd like. I'm probably going to pick a terrible color, but you know, you can, you can go ahead and do that and change the font and all that. So you can really customize this thing and make it look exactly like you'd like. And without any coding, which is I think the best part. And let me show you the carousel too. If you're not familiar with the carousel, those are those little side to side swipey thingies that you see or they occasionally go by themselves. I'm, I'm doing this manually because it doesn't, there's no auto timer in editor, but it does work when you're viewing the site. So you can click on it, very similar to the accordion editor, you've got what you can put on here. You can reorder them if you'd like, add a slide, change the slide image. Like if I pop this in here instead, that was not loading for some reason, but I'll just pick, there we go. They'll pick one of those, you can even put custom content on a slide, full HTML editor. So put a video or text or links or whatever you want to. So you can link your image, open it in a new tab if you'd like, or just have a carousel. And then over here, you've got a bunch of settings for the height and you know, you want to fill the carousel with the image, automatically advanced, show the dots, change the dot color, all sorts of cool things. So, but yeah, those are, those are, there's, let me preview it. I think this thing is set up to go after five seconds, so it should go. But this will make it a lot easier for you to add more interactive controls. And these like carousel and accordion are fully, you know, they work on mobile devices too really well. You can swipe them and everything for the carousel. So really excited to announce that. And we've got more goodies coming too. Hope to see that in the next week or two here, depending on how things go. Back to you, Ashley.
Yeah, for sure. This is such an exciting feature, especially if you like to put things like testimonials on website pages. A great way to kind of scroll through and increase the volume of that on your page without creating a lot of visual busyness. And speaking of testimonials, can we talk about this incredible reset that's happening? And the wild results people are getting from it. What I would like to do here is introduce Tammy, Stacy and Jill. They are part of the team that helps to facilitate the 14 Day Reset. This is a Team YL phenomenon, so it's not like owned by any individual person or entity. This truly is for everyone, but these are some folks who are doing a lot of hard work behind the scenes to help keep things running. And, and one of the things that we're going to be talking about here today as well is something that Jill has been helping with. And that is putting this content onto a Get Oiling platform so that folks who aren't on Facebook can access the contents of the reset. So without further ado, who wants to go first? Who can tell us first maybe about what the 14 Day Reset is? And they can kind of get into the details of what, what people can do to join in and of course, use it to grow.
Yeah. So the 14 Day Reset is just a simple system that walks people through four areas that they need to focus on their health. Consuming water, cleaning up their diet, moving their body and consuming Nisha Red. All of that is put into a system that is easy to follow and understand, whether that's a booklet, a website, a printout. All of the resources are there for you and Jill's going to show you everything that you have, but it's also extremely duplicatable. So when people start to see amazing testimonies, they're able to turn that around and just ask family and friends, "Do you want to come do this with me?" And what we're seeing is there's not a lot of friction because everything is here and ready for you. That's in a system that's easy to follow and easy to understand. So they don't feel like they have to be an expert. They just have to actually do it. So they do it, they see results and they share. So it's almost like the way that network marketing works, right? But in a simple, simple way, right?
That is so exciting. So basically what this looks like is there is a big group. And how, how big of a group if we're going to talk about, because this started on in a Facebook group, right? How big is this Facebook group that's full of people getting great results?
I think we're going to hit 10,000 today. I think we're going to hit 10,000 today. We grow about a thousand a week at this point now since Young Living launched the Reset Bundle. But yes, Facebook.
Yeah. So that's so exciting to see because you've got that social proof, right? That like you said, it's just a low friction way to get people connected. So what are, what are some of the results that people are seeing? Or is there a way for us to kind of maybe talk about that? Obviously we could send people to, we will be showing you guys a link shortly. But yeah, tell us a little bit about like what's, what's happening, what's transforming for people taking part in this.
So as far as your physical health, I mean, you're definitely going to see the testimonial page that we built out. So you guys can hear the incredible testimonies of people's health actually changing, which is incredible. And that's what we're here for is to be the light of the world and to go out and help other people. And it's coming from a place of simplicity. So even though I feel like I'm still on my journey, I actually feel very comfortable asking people to join me on this journey. And I think that's one of the best parts of it. As far as a business standpoint, the numbers coming in from Young Living for the first four days are pretty incredible. Since they've been shared on social media, I'm going to share them with you here. A lot of people have seen them and heard them, but if you haven't heard them, let me pull them up. So coming from corporate, the Nisha Red Reset Make a Shift Kit has sold 600% more than any other Make a Shift Kit in the first four days. We have sold 35% of the month one forecast in four days. Don't worry, we have enough inventory, they build it out in-house, don't freak out like Tammy does, they promise her that there isn't enough. The next one is the coolest statement. And this is where I want you guys to understand how you're going to grow your business. 45% of all enrollments since Saturday have joined with the Reset Kit. This number is much higher than they ever projected. This means that half of all Young Living new members said yes to the reset. That is so, in my mind from, for four days, we have doubled our onboarding with this bundle. That's how monumentous this is. And by the way, guys, this is our first month really launching extremely into the field, not only with corporate, but also with larger teams. So this isn't even the duplication month that they expected, which is something that Tyson did not expect. We really projected numbers for our current members being excited. He did not project massive numbers for duplication. We were expecting that month two and three, as we saw people see change. But that's another amazing thing about this reset is that you're able to go into this website, grab these graphics, grab this link, you're able to share it and say, "Listen, I'm in a place of sick. I am doing this. Here are some testimonies that I saw. Does anybody want to do this with me? So I'm not alone." You actually don't have to already do it to start sharing, which is the craziest phenomenon. And I don't feel like, like I can tell this to my downline and they are excited to start sharing without even done the reset. Now, I do want you to do the reset. I want you to see your health change. I want you to have your own personal story, but you can ride on the backs of others who've already done it as well.
Amazing. So you're creating that momentum or really you're leveraging the momentum that's already in place as you of course, you know, get in and start becoming a product of this as well. Fantastic. Floor is certainly open for, for you guys as well to come out and chat. If you want to say anything Stacy or Jill, before I get into screen sharing and talking about the website that we want to send people to.
I will just say that I'm excited about the reset of course, and I've got to see it evolve and Tammy's idea from the beginning. And it's been amazing to be a part of. I'm really excited to be back with Get Oiling and especially, you know, all the new changes and different things that you, and obviously everything evolves in life, you know? And so I'm glad to be back with Get Oiling and then how this all works for us as well, which Jill's helping me learn more about it with, I think it's the bundles, right? Is it the bundle? Right, right, right word. But the website's great. I'll let her tell you the numbers because I don't know the updated numbers probably, but it's like just so exciting how many people are already on and you know, this is only going to grow and it's just exciting. This is the first time this is really going live. And now that Young Living is, has a brand new kit that happens to correlate with the same name and it's just exciting. So that's it. Thank you.
For sure. Jill, do you want to pop out and say anything now or do you want to wait until we start screen sharing?
I can wait till we screen the, okay, you know, do the thing.
Okay, awesome. So first thing I'm going to do for those of you who are here in the chat right now is I'm going to give you a present. There is a resource bundle here and this is a resource bundle that is going to allow you to start sharing the 14 Day Reset from your own Get Oiling system or from your own Get Oiling website if you have website pages enabled. So but the first thing that we want to kind of show and tell, I would think, is actually the 14 Day Reset website. So the 14 Day Reset website as well as the vault that the reset is hosted in, if you are not using the Facebook option, is on its own Get Oiling account. So we are really proud and excited to, to be helping you guys in any way that we can to facilitate this movement and this amazing momentum that's taking place for Team Young Living. And I'm going to go ahead and show you guys the hard work that has come to fruition here. So this is 14day-reset.com. And this is a full website that's going, like you could actually just share this, right? If you're somebody who doesn't have your own website, if you are super low tech, whatever, you can literally take this link, 14day-reset.com. And this is what you can share with your friends and family. You don't need to have anything other than this link and of course, inviting them to do the reset with you. It has all of the instructions, says what you need to do, right? There's the sneak peek here that gives you really the low down on exactly what the reset is. Share some of the incredible testimonials, especially those image ones are so powerful. Look at that. This is so cool. Really, really excited about this. So you can see that, you know, we've got all of the information that we need, including what we can do if we want to get started, right? So we can go to Facebook or if we want to be off of Facebook, we can join right here and hop into what we call it Get Oiling, a vault, which is a private member area where you can go and access all of this information. Now it is more or less identical information, right? And the vault is, as is in the Facebook group. Obviously there's quite a bit more people in the Facebook group because you've had that going for a while. But you're going to have more or less information wise, the same experience. So if you are somebody who doesn't use Facebook or if you are, you know, wanting to, you know, invite folks to a place that's not there or they just want to give them an option, then you have this here. There's a whole page of testimonials. And by the way, great job Jill, Jill did this. So loads of testimonials here that you can go check out. And, and just like Tammy was saying, you know, get to know these testimonials because these are things that you can be sharing, even if you don't have your own results yet. Because you've just started or you're, you're waiting for your 102 ounces of Nisha to get here. You can actually be sharing this information. Now, real quick, I want to show you what I put in the, in the chat for you guys. This is your resource bundle, okay? Now your resource bundle has a page and it has two saved replies. And I have some instructions here for you. Now, if you are using Get Oiling at a basic or higher plan and you plan to use the custom webpage that is included in this bundle, you're going to follow this first set of instructions, right? You're going to just claim these top two resources. If you are not using website pages and say you're at seed or starter or you've maxed out your pages on basic and you want to just send people to the 14 Day Reset website, keep this really simple, then you're just going to uncheck these top two and claim the one that's on the bottom here. Now I'm going to actually go and show you what is included in these. And when you want to claim them, all you have to do is just check the box. And Jane L, this is just our dummy account for Get Oiling, it's us. And we do not use your information if you claim this stuff. But you are Get Oiling user if you're claiming this obviously. So here we go. So we've got all of this information here. I'm going to go and check this out. So this 14 Day Reset Sneak Peek page, here's the cool thing that I want to show you. You're going to see that this is more or less identical to the Sneak Peek page on the 14 Day Reset website, except for one really cool important thing. As you scroll down through here and you get to the point where we are encouraging somebody to order, which is right here. This is going to go to the Young Living website with your member number included. So if somebody is not yet a customer, you can still send them to this page on your website. And when they click to add the Make a Shift Reset Kit to their loyalty order or they click to add this Nisha Red Loyalty Rewards to their loyalty order, they will become your customer when they place their order. And of course, as we scroll down, we still have that Facebook option, right? And we are still sending them up here to this section to go order. And that is a little jump button here. There's also a Get In Touch. So this will pop up your own contact form. So if somebody has questions or if they are, they want to know about that 10% that they could get off the top of this, if they haven't placed an order before, then they can obviously get in touch with you because this would be on your website. And then finally, if they want the off Facebook option, they can click here. And that is going to take them to the 14 Day Reset website where they are able to create a vault login and get access. All right. Now just a couple more things here in this bundle, we have two saved replies. This first one, you can pop this into any existing email. So maybe you have a newsletter that you're sending out, you can add this to your existing newsletter, you can add this to your onboarding campaigns, whatever that might look like for you. These saved replies can drag and like just insert, just drop right into your existing content. And so this one has the 14 Day Reset, tells them what they'll get. And then this is going to go straight to that page on your website. If you have claimed this bundle and you're going to have that 14 Day Reset Sneak Peek page on your website. It also has a text message that goes to the same place with a nice little image. Now, if you are not using website pages, totally fine. There is a saved reply that you can use that looks very similar. And again, you can send it via email or text. And this will send them to the 14 Day Reset website instead, just to keep it really simple for you. So if you're not doing website pages, you can still really easily go and share this information. So Jill, tell me where to go next. What are we looking for?
Okay. So I want to, I'm going to tell you guys a little bit about why this got created to begin with. Several of you probably know, I quit Facebook in 2021. And because I just needed peace and a less of the distractions that it offers. But the things like this is what I missed most is the community aspect of it. And so Get Oiling has actually provided that with their vaults. So the way that this is designed to work, I see there's a couple of questions. So Ashley put together these, this page that is a duplicate of the main Sneak Peek page so that you can put it onto your own website and the links for ordering are your own. And so when they've purchased, they're purchasing through you. Once they've purchased, they go into the main Reset Vault and they get added in there with the, the community, which is, I just looked and it was over 750 people as of today. And we expect to see that number continuing to grow just alongside the, the Facebook numbers as well. So, yeah, and so, so the idea is that we're building a larger community. And the inspiration for actually doing this was because I have my own vaults. And, but teaching somebody something new where it, it's easier if there's a little less traction and a little more engagement already happening there. And so by incorporating this 14 Day Reset Vault that isn't any of ours, it is a community vault. They understand how the vault system works. And then on the 14 days when a vault or when a reset isn't happening, they get curious about what's in my vault. Because they would also get access to that. So hopefully that makes sense. And yes, Amber, you can absolutely get vaults in your own plan. So we can give you a sneak preview of what the vault actually looks like. Give me just a second. And I will put my.
All right. Are you going to screen share Jill? Okay. I have made you co-host so you can do that. Oh, you're muted Jill.
Sorry about that. All right. So once you're actually in the vault, this is what it looks like. And we wanted to make sure that there was some attention brought to the fact that there's an app, just like Facebook has. So they don't have to sit at their computer to access this either. And you'll see that there's a welcome section which gives the basics of the instructions, some rules. We've made a page that tells them how to set up their notifications. So it's binging their phone or binging their email as much or as little as they want it to. And then an explanation of exactly what the reset involves. And so that's this first section, all of these are clickable. And so each of them will have more information. There's a guide here that they can print. And one of the things that we made sure to do is as many pages as we've been able to, so far, there's quite a few of them. There's testimonials. And so, so that as they're walking through these steps, each one of them is a little bit more of a level of commitment that they're making to this process. And so, so we want to encourage them with stories of, that this works. I'm going to click on this 14 Day Reset Vault and it's going to take me back to the homepage again. There's an announcements and testimonies area. I'm going to come back to that. I put it, we put it closer to the top. So because it's one of the things that people will be looking for on a more regular basis. But, but I want to show you some of these other areas really quickly too. So you have these different sections to learn more about what Nisha Red can do. And including videos that are linked here. So, and during the 14 days, we'll be pointing back to these particular pages. So that whether they're starting that day and they haven't had a chance to look at this before, or they've had a chance or it's not during the reset, they still have access to the information. And then during the 14 days, we'll be compiling, you know, hey, go check out what Nisha Red can do to your blood and just continue to inspire each other through this process. There's also a page here with printables and accountability. So there's a participant packet, there's more, more printouts and then a flyer for sharing with other people. And then you've got some meal plans and these are just, just some basics. Of course you can choose a meal plan, any meal plan that works for you and your lifestyle. But these are some jumping off points and with into each of these, there's a little bit more education on what that meal plan involves. As well as over here on the right-hand side, you'll see downloads of different recipes. And then there's also a link to the thread within the, the community text and chat for people doing the Whole Foods thread who either have questions or they found a great recipe and they want to share it with other people as well. So, so there's, there's lots of them in here, GAPS, Keto, Paleo, intermittent fasting, Whole30, No Processed Sugar. There's also additional other holiday recipes and smoothies. So, and then there's a section here with exercise and information. Anna Ramers is our, is our Team YL coach for this and she's put together a lot of great content for, for the basics, learning about your fat burning zone, making sure you're using proper forms so you don't get injured. And then different ways that you can move your body for cardio and then strength training as well. And each of these again is clickable and there's, I love this, there's so many workouts in here. With these, you've got a quick summary and then which just tells you, hey, these are what you do. You kind of make, you have your own like concept of it and then you just go do your workout separately. And this is for those of us that like to follow along and stay, you know, have that kind of coach with us the entire time. So there's about three different workouts and then we, that you can, then you can tap into there and kind of rotate through them. And during the actual reset, she's actually going to walk us through, like do this one today, do this one today. So if you really like to have a regimen and somebody saying, "Do this," you know, on this day, you have that possibility. There's also a link down here at the bottom with, with a bunch of the different shareable links. So you have that as a, as a place to get started as well. So heading back up to the testimonies chat here. We've got, you've got all sorts of different things. So if you are in this group already, hop in here and answer this first one, introduce yourself. This is a great way to get, get the conversation flowing. And so you can see there, it, this works a lot like Facebook, which is what makes it so attractive is it follows a very similar pattern to what we're already used to. So you'll see there's, so this is that Whole Food, Whole30 Meal Plan and it's got different, there's people giving recipes, asking questions as well. So showing their Nisha, lots of, lots of things going on here. So, so you have access to each other in that community vibe that, that was, is missing when you're not in that social media place. So, so this is what the vault looks like and I'll give you guys a little bit of a information about what's to come. So there is a team, obviously this is all team built. There's no way I could have done this. The beautiful graphics were not my doing whatsoever. Stacy has been holding my hand because I couldn't build any of this without the, without the actual information that's posted and been built for, for months and months and months over on Facebook. So my part was to take all the building blocks that everybody else has and build them over here. And something else I'd love to point out is that it was really fun to see Stacy jump in and learn how, how easy it is to use Get Oiling and to build things. And, and, and I think she can testify that, that it really is less of a challenge than it needs to be. So it, this is, this is something that's very doable. And when the building blocks are in there already for you, it just makes it that much better. Some other things, if you have people that aren't necessarily using Get Oiling, there's, there's other ways that we can, that we will be building in different ways to share based on whatever platform you are or aren't using. So one of them would be a Swaylink or a Canva website page with links. So one of them would be a Swaylink or a Canva website page with links to do this. So if there's different ways that people are already familiar with, we want to give them as many possibilities so that they can share within their comfort zone. And I think that that's important, that they don't have to learn a whole lot of new things. They just have to share, do and share. So so there's a duplicate vault that is in the process of being built in Spanish right now. And I believe some other languages will be coming very soon. So we'll be, we'll be sharing links to that as they get up and running. For those that are doing the low tech, helping people with low tech that do not use the internet or or really just need, need an option for, for something that's just written in front of them. We're building out packets that actually have all of that information minus the QR codes and the, and the things that that can add confusion for, for certain individuals. And then obviously this that gives us a home that's safe and and algorithm free and stays focused on what we're doing. And I think that those are kind of the biggest assets here is that it's distraction free. It's, there's a, there's a a clear concise way of following along. So so we wanted to make sure that you knew that this was, this is here for you. And that there's, that there's a lot of team involved in making this happen. So I think that's all, unless there's questions that, which I need to look at the Q and A in the chat, sorry.
Awesome, thank you so much for doing this and for sharing this today, you guys. There's obviously, there are some questions here if we haven't gotten to your questions. If you can move those to the Q and A, if you haven't been answered yet, that would be really helpful. So we can make sure we don't miss anything from you. There was a question here about, you know, is there a way to share if I'm not with Get Oiling? And yeah, absolutely, 100% 14day-reset.com. You don't have to be a Get Oiling member at all, period. Period, end of story. We have, obviously with the resource bundle we've shared today, provided a way for those of you who do have Get Oiling to integrate it into what you're already doing. And and to more easily share the 14 day reset with your own system. But all you need to do is go to the 14 day reset website and send your people there. Sign yourself up there. Do the Facebook one if that's your thing, sign up for the vault so that you know what the experience is like and invite the next person to come and do the same thing with you. And you know, just go, go and get that result so that you can have your own testimony. And of course, familiarize yourself with the plethora of testimonies that are also there to really help show people how amazing this reset is.
Can we just go, can we just go real quick to just the the web, you can take off the extension on there and so they can see the top. And so just to make sure everyone understands is that when you go here, because on Facebook, we made these webpages. Even though, once again, we have Get Oiling and people who already know that system or they want to get it, they could do that. But when you go to sneak peek or you go to testimonials, those two just keep bringing you back to the same place. So this is just literally a web link that you could send to anybody that has the right information. We tried many different things before, but then, you know, Androids don't let it open or iPhones have a problem with this or whatever the case may be. And so this way, this link right here is our main hub of getting these, this two, these two pieces of information. The sneak peek and the testimonies, we're sending everyone to this web address to get that kind of information, no matter if they're on Facebook or not. Because obviously people on Facebook can get it too. But this is where we have all of this information, we're sending everyone here. Because this way, all the links will always work and nothing will be a problem. So just want to make sure people knew that.
Yeah, and I think it's also important for, for people to understand that there's a distinction here, right? Get Oiling is a platform and Get Oiling is a platform that allows you to build your brand and business. But it also, in this case, has allowed the 14 day reset to launch its brand and its vault. So if you're getting access to the vault that's here, it doesn't make you a Get Oiling member. You don't have to pay for anything. It's as free as the Facebook group. They're just, they're using the Get Oiling technology to be able to offer this to everyone for free. And you can share this with anyone you'd like.
One thing I want to point out for those asking questions. When you share the direct sneak peek from this page, these are not linkable. And so they will have to go back to you to get started with a Make a Shift Kit or the Loyalty Order option. And so when you have a Get Oiling, a subscription for your own website that you're building, the links actually click and they will go back to your own Young Living site with your member number two. Now, there was a question from, from someone about, I think it's Sean. The, do you create a vault for your team and customers? What I would suggest here and the reason that we did this is because one of the things that's magical about the 14 day reset is that there's a commune, a huge community of people doing this and that they're getting, you're getting this massive influx of testimonials of all of the time. And so when, when you have that magic, it's really good for them to stay in this vault. Now, if you want to actually create a separate vault with education about other Young Living products or other information that you have pertaining to Nisha Red or the reset, I would actually, I would suggest do that in your own vault and providing even more education to to your members as well. But you do not have to recreate this and that's the beautiful thing. I will also mention that it's, sorry, and I think Tammy is going to speak to the exact same thing. The 14 day reset does not earn any income. Nobody here makes any money off of this program. So it is completely a volunteer based. And and actually, it is, in many ways, has been a financial cost to the people that are part of it. Because we know the value in this duplication model. So if you are thinking about joining Get Oiling, one thing to mention also is down at the bottom of here, there's a link to how we built the site. And that actually takes you to the Get Oiling page to do this. If you do this, then Get Oiling actually, so it, it works as a referral thing. And it does help the 14 day reset to pay for their own costs for the website. So so it is one of the ways that you can contribute and what you have brought to the table. It's one of the ways that you can contribute to this whole project. The other way would definitely be through your own testimonial.
Okay, I just want to
Sorry, Tammy.
No, it's okay. There were some questions of, does the 14 day reset, does it link them back to a referral for Young Living? So this is completely different, like Ashley was saying, than Young Living. We've just used this as a hub because it was an easy system that was already here and we knew we could build it out on it, right? So the 14 day reset has its own email. It has its own website here. It is not linked to anybody's affiliate number through Young Living, nothing like that. We go above and beyond to make sure that almost like I, I was asked a question the other day, actually, I think it was someone on this call. She said, oh, I wondered who the 14 day reset was. I said, that's what I want. I want you to actually not even think of it as a who, but almost as a collaborative movement. It is more of a what, right? I don't want you to know who is working behind the scenes because we have seen the who's leave. And if the who's are the front and center, then we have an issue when they leave, right? So in Facebook, we always post things from an actual business page. So you don't know who is posting. Nobody needs to be the limelight on this. This is meant for you to integrate into your business with ease and confidence that if anything was to happen to any of the who's, you will not be shaken. Because there are layers and layers of who's that are helping, right? And nobody will ever even know if somebody falls off and goes away. So this is that energy, this is that movement, this is that I can, I feel confident to come here. This is going to be here and this is going to work for me and my business. And nobody's going to poach my people, nobody's going to capture their emails, nobody's going to do any of that. That is one thing that we were adamant with actually at the beginning was the email. We were slightly concerned because Get Oiling needs an email. But then we asked them to toggle it off that us 14 day reset admins have no absolute connection to it. We can never capture that, we can never send you guys a marketing email about the reset. There's nothing that we can do so that never, is that an option? Never will be, be able to contact your people so that you feel confident putting them into the education vault, the main vault. Now, I do see, and I'm not a Get Oiling expert, but I do see that you guys can make your own sneak peek pages with your, your links to go order. That is incredible. I think that's amazing, it's already there, they've already done it for you. I love that idea. But as far as the larger main group, I highly, highly suggest that you do not recreate that. One, we've asked people not to do that. It really takes the momentum away. There are, this is all volunteer based. So we're really allowing the momentum. So you are blessing us by getting your team in here, by getting your testimony in here, by doing this as a team, by doing it as a collaboration. That is your heart that you're taking in on this, right? We're always saying, guys, this is like a huge momentum in Young Living, it's a movement. So if you take, if you were to copy and paste all this out and screenshot the graphics and make your own, really you would be pulling away from that, right? And you're also feeling that that's not duplication in your business, right? I don't want my team to think that I have to do all this work and I have to have my own vault and I have to do my own thing because that's that hamster wheel work that we may have been distracted on for the last couple of years that we no longer have to do. We have a system in place, the system works, it's duplicatable, it's all here. Nobody can poach your people, it's amazing this and it gets to move forward. So I hope that I will get off the soapbox of why we do that. But I want you guys to see the passion behind why we make the decisions we make behind the scenes so that you guys feel confident to send your people to this website, to that Facebook page. We're not here to take your people.
Beautiful, thank you so much for clarifying that and for spelling that out again. Because I think it's really, really important for folks to, to really know and understand that the, the bigger pool you can introduce people to, the bigger, the, the volume of social proof you can, can show, the greater momentum we can all build together. And the, the protective nature, especially if you've been around for any amount of time that we have for, for some good reason, is understandable, but this really is something that, that you can trust to, to bring your people to. And and just, and just as sort of like a final clarification for folks who are asking about how the engagement works and all of that. This works exactly like a vault, if you're familiar with Get Oiling, that any vault would look like in any other account. It's just, this is in the 14 day reset account. If you have a vault that you have your members log into and get access to, they're going to go to your website dot com slash members, they're going to log in, they're going to get access to whatever vaults they have. But in order for them to get access to this, they're going to go to 14day-reset.com. They're going to log in there and they're going to have their experience there. Now, if they have the Attract Well app and they do have the app links here in, inside of their vault, then it is very easy to move between the different member areas that one might be a part of if they are built on the same system. So you may encourage them to use the app and they can easily toggle between the 14 day reset vault that's on the 14 day reset website and your, you know, whatever additional content, member serving stuff that you might have. Allison had a question about with the resource bundle, which ones do you not want to claim if you're basic or higher? You could really claim all of them if you're basic or higher. I just wanted to make sure that for anyone who is at seed or starter or who's maxed out on their pages and doesn't want to use this replicated page that we've created to be able to have an option to just simply share the 14 day reset website. Let me see. And and you know, in terms of modification of the resource bundle, it is built specifically so that you don't have to modify it. So you may certainly follow additional trainings that we have available to, to make it your own if you want to. But again, this is really all about simplifying so that you can duplicate. And and it's, it's working, it's fantastic. It's got, you know, like they said, is over 700 people. And and just a handful of days into this vault, take advantage of that momentum that's already building there. And and definitely send folks over here to the 14 day reset website so that they can get started. Use that page on your own website for your sharing because it does, if you choose to do that, it does give you that direct link to send them off to get those bundles if you choose. But the simplest way to do this, whether you have Get Oiling or not, is to go to 14day-reset.com so that you can educate people on what this is, let them see the testimonials and ultimately have them join one of these two great experiences that are laid out for you. I am
I'm gonna
Yeah.
I was going to quickly answer Collette's question about posting comments in the vault. When you're in here, you're just going to go to the announcements and testimonies chat button. And then you can see that there's a place to write a post. So hopefully that answers it in a pretty quick and concise way. And then Allison, Ashley asked about a demo for how to add the menu pages. Perhaps in the comments on here, we can link for that. Perfect, good. And then Allison figured it out too. I'm wondering if there's any other. Oh, so the other thing that Stacy was checking on, she wanted to make sure that we had the bundle info. So you will make sure that that's linked in the, in the recording as well. So, so that people can quickly access and claim that bundle. Is it in the chat recently as well?
Uh, let me see, we can certainly pop that in here again for anyone who hasn't seen it here, just a second. There we go.
You know, I just want to say, I just, I really love the true people here at Young Living that understand Gary's mission and the whole purpose behind Young Living. And obviously Get Oiling is a part of that. You guys are members as well and have been a part of Young Living. And we have a printer, for example, that's going to be, she's offered her services in her business to print all of these pamphlets that are 28 pages, whether they have QR codes or the low tech ones for like the Amish, for example, at her, at her cost. And she's making a webpage right now, I just sent her the files for that. And so it's just like, like everyone's coming together. And even though this is like all volunteer, it's just amazing to see all of us working together and something that's so great. And it's just really going to help change people's lives in many different ways. And then help us get to the services that we need that can help make our lives easier, more cohesive and just sharing how we need and hopefully really get people off social media that just, you know, who knows how long it's going to last anyhow. But and just having something already ready that if something happens with social media, at least now we have this site that everyone can start going to to still continue on a day to day basis for our monthly challenges. So really thank you guys for all that you guys are doing as well. And especially Jill, because I know this wouldn't happen without Jill, this website. So just want to say thanks.
I want to expand the vision a little bit too, while we're talking about this. So those of you that already have vaults, I'm going to share a little personal thing that's, that's happened. Some of the local leaders within the area that I live in caught wind of all of this and started thinking about the possibility of, of creating a local chapter for, for education events, even group training within our local area too, that's its own entity as well. So these are some other considerations for how can we share and, and all build together and, and share the load in all of this. And I think that's the, that's what the 14 day reset has really brought to, to Young Living is sharing the load.
Fabulous, thank you guys so much for all you've done. We do have one person who has signed up for a live work review today, so I want to honor that time and give her the space to, to work together. You guys, 14day-reset.com, join the Facebook group, join the vault, order your kit and let's do this. Rising tide lifts all ships and there is such amazing work being done here to, to really be able to take part in and to grow along with, for you, for your community, for your team. So thank you guys again so much for being here. Marjaleen, I'm going to bring you out to chat and let's take a look at what you need help with today. How can we help you?
Hi.
Hi. Yeah, how can we help? We can hear you.
Okay, sorry, I, I just don't know how to do this. Yeah, I'm, I've got a website with my business, Share Marjaleen Health and Beauty. And I was hoping to learn how to combine the two websites. And I think I have to get to a concierge to help me. I've just come to a conclusion that I may need a lot more help personally.
Would you like to maybe talk through it together and you can have a better idea of, of what you might want to take to concierge?
Well, I, I, I feel like I don't, I've been with Get Oiling for a while and I don't understand a lot of things. I don't know how to, you know, set up the vault. And I would like to link the Share Marjaleen website so that I can use my Get Oiling website. I don't even know how to use it really.
Okay.
Yeah.
How do you use your existing website? What is, what is that used for?
Well, it's, it's, it's with Google. So you know, I'm not really happy about that, but it's with Google. And so people just get on there and book to come to have a massage or facial. And then I talk to them about oils because I have massage with my oils. And then I get them to a class. And then I get them to a class, uh, face to face class on the weekend. I might do a class um, about oils or well, I'm about to do a Ninja Red class in March. Um, calling it the energy health drink cocktail. I'm doing a mocktail party. So I'm wanting to get more and more doing classes on here. Um, and doing Zoom classes. Yeah, um, I think I probably need a lot more help, but I thought I'd come up. Wake up, I'm in Australia, so it's four o'clock in the morning and I felt like I haven't slept all night to be here. So.
Oh, my goodness. Well, thank you so much for your patience. We appreciate you um, taking that time. Uh, so, so what it sounds like to me is that you have um, you have an existing business, right? You have uh, several functions that are being filled by the website that you set up for it. Um, but you are ultimately integrating that business into, or you're, you're integrating Young Living into that business, right? So.
Yeah.
What I see in a lot of cases uh, is that you can absolutely bring them both under one roof with Get Oiling. And we actually do, we have some trainings on this. Uh, and it's certainly something I, I do absolutely recommend, uh, you know, sitting down with concierge to get a clearer idea of sort of what that scope of work would look like so that you could maybe even, you know, project it out. Um, but really what, what I would think about just as, as a first step would be to um, maybe use a subdomain. So this would be your um, your existing website that you have on Google, but it would be,
Yeah.
you know, oils dot thatwebsite.com. And then so when people go to that website, uh, then you know, they would be able to see your, your events, uh, and then any other, you know, Young Living specific stuff. And that you could eventually combine these all together. Uh, but I, I would maybe just um, as you know, so, so we're not totally jumping off the deep end here. Um, of course, unless you want to and you want to hire the team to do it, and they're certainly qualified to do that. Uh, but uh, but I, I think the simple path is to go ahead and start using the Get Oiling system for the oily stuff. And then maybe have that connected via a subdomain and then just have it uh, be a goal over a set period of time to start migrating um, the things that you have on the existing website over to your Get Oiling one. And then you can set the domain back up as the domain you have for your Google website right now. So that way it's just your website. It's on Get Oiling on the backend. You don't have to worry about managing multiple different uh, pieces of software uh, to keep things running. Cause anything that you're using like for booking, for instance, all of that stuff could be embedded into uh, pages on your Get Oiling site.
Yeah, I um, I have, I don't um, have that on my um, Google because I like to talk to people so they ring. Because it's just a woman's only um, little spa room at my house. So yeah. It's a bit tricky, but and I have got my team up to silver. So I've got about 200 people in my Young Living team. And somehow I just feel um, a bit overwhelmed now because I want to learn new things and and um, I've started the uh, I'm doing this training with you, the Get Growing 2024. So I've been on there twice. Uh, well, it was only been the last week and then I realized how many things I have to learn after being on the call at six o'clock um, on Monday morning. I think it was Tuesday morning for Australia. And I thought, oh my goodness, I'm really, yeah, overwhelmed with the coaching even um, to go and put all my things that I'm doing. Um, yeah, there's so much to learn and yeah, I'm feeling a bit overwhelmed really.
So what, what I would recommend that you do, because you know, when, when you actually sit back and, and you look at what all is possible uh, using our system, it can be overwhelming when you know that you want all of those things and you would love to see all of them done. Uh, but the best way I think to approach this is to, as you have ideas, have a place where you collect them. You know, I would really like for my website to do this. I would really like to have this eventually. So have sort of a wishlist for yourself. And then pick one thing that would be most important to your business. Like what would be the thing that, like, what's the low hanging fruit? The thing that is going to provide the greatest benefit right now? Uh, thing that represents the greatest need that you have right now and just focus on that. Right? Just one thing at a time. Because you really don't have to have everything to do one thing. All you have to do is do one thing, right? So if it's keeping the Get Oiling site just as it is and then putting up an event and then promoting that event exactly as you would have done otherwise. Can you do it other ways with Get Oiling? Yeah, sure. And can you in the future? Yeah, also, sure. Uh, but do it the way that is comfortable.
Do you mean, do you mean just write an email for a um, an event? Cause I am going to have an event on the ninth of March. Um, that's live though. It's at my place. So what you're saying, just write out an email?
Yeah, you can create an event on, on your, your Good Oiling site for this, for this thing. Uh, and then share the link to it. And you can actually, once you create uh, the event, uh, there's a link for you to share on social media. There's a way to just grab the link to the event. You can send that out via, you know, if it's Gmail or whatever you have already been using. Just start with one thing at a time. You don't have to, even though you can with an event, for instance, attach automations and campaigns and date based things and redirects and all, you can do all kinds of complicated things with events. Just create an event, just like you would use it on Eventbrite or Facebook and share the link.
So how do I do that on um, on Gmail, on Get Oiling? Is there a place on the side that says create again?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's going to be right down here under events, under Zoom and events. It's right here. Yeah. And it looks like you've actually created a few already from a, a couple of years ago.
Well, yes, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, so you just go to add. Yeah. So, so you do know how to do this. So you can go in and, and you can add, add the information. And then once it's created, you're able to copy the link, right? And then just go to your Gmail. Right? If you don't know how to import your contacts yet, okay, fine. Do that. Learn how to do that later. Copy the link and send it. Because the thing is, is the people who are SVP, they're going to get added into your Good Oiling system. So now you don't have to worry about it. They're adding themselves, right? So just start with one thing that you know you need to do. Know that yes, there are ways to refine it and make it more complex uh, in the future, but you don't have to, you don't have to walk in with a PhD, right? We, we all, we all crawl before we walk, right? We all, you know, have to learn um, arithmetic before calculus, right? So um, you know, just pick one thing, take one step. And, and what you'll find is, is if, if you're using the system logically, like I need an event, I need a way to capture RSVP information for the event, then you just do that thing that you need, right? And then go about exactly how you would normally go about sharing, for instance, this event. And now you feel more confident when you come back to try another thing. I made an event. I had an event. I used this for the event. And next time I'm going to do, I'm going to pick this thing for my wishlist, right? I'm going to import my contacts. Or I'm going to create a date based campaign um, or something like that. But um, but I would just.
Can you go back on my?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Can you go back on my page? You know how you shared how to um, uh, uh, with the contacts, I would like to make, I've got, I've made them into lists, but I would like to make them into alphabetical order and I'm not sure how to make that to, cause now you've got on my head that I will like to uh, do a lot more tags so I can separate my emails. I've been sending everybody everything and now I'm really feeling, oh my goodness, I've got to go through 400 emails and make sure that I get people that I'm talking to that are not on ER, and the ones that are on ER, the ones that inactive and the ones that are for Share Marjolaine. And I've tagged a lot of um, my people, but I just want to see them quick, quicker, I guess, if they're on the list. And I think there is a way of doing that on the list and putting them in alphabetical order.
Hmm. Do we have an alphabetical view, Greg?
Uh, thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, there should be, uh, there's a sorting option in the contact manager. Um, it's at the top.
Okay, here, I think, oh, perfect. I'll, I'll show you. I actually, I, I'm going to go into a dummy account because I, I don't want to show your contacts, contact information.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
But um, but you're going to hit the filters button is essentially what you're going to do. And uh, and that's going to, it's going to provide you that option. Yeah. So if we go to your contacts and then uh, you go to filters, then you could sort last name or first name. Top to bottom. So this would be the alphabetical here.
Yeah.
Right? And so there you go.
Drop down right next to the filter button too.
Ah, ah, yes, also here. There you go. Perfect. Yeah. So if you wanted to go about it that way, you certainly could.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
So exactly what is the email for the concierge again? Cause you said it very quickly. I think I've heard it a few times now, but.
Yeah, it's getoiling.com slash concierge. It's going to take you to a page and on that page, uh, there's actually a link to a form. So you'll let them know what all you're, you're interested in having help with. You'll have a call with them. They'll come up with a quote for you and then you guys can choose to move forward however works best for you.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming out and hope you get some rest today.
I'll be back.
Good. I can't wait. All right. Um, I think there was just a couple more questions here before we get going. Um, so as I understand, the 14 day reset will be launched every month. I saw somewhere already the dates, the vault will be evergreen or will there be monthly announcements? I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. And if anyone is still on the call who could speak to that, doesn't look like it. Um, that might be something to send their way. I, I wouldn't, I would be surprised if that information wasn't posted somewhere inside of the vault uh, or in the Facebook group. But the vault is evergreen. So nobody's getting kicked out after 14 days. The whole idea of the reset from what I've been able to gather uh, is that it's something that you can continually participate in. So after reset one, here are my results. I've done this reset four times. Here are my results. So um, the idea is definitely to keep people there in community. Um, okay. So you had an issue with your password to get in. Okay. Okay. Glad you were able to get that figured out. Um, and Myrna, I'm not a hundred percent uh, sure on, you know, market based information. I will say if you are using the um, the, the resource bundle that we've created, the page does have a leaf link. Uh, so let me just go show you guys real quick. Um, let me find that. And so if, if you are in a different market, uh, you will want to potentially make a modification here. So this, here we go, custom page, 14 day reset sneak peek. So down here, and this is the only thing that you would need to modify if you're in a different market, is right here. This add to loyalty order, it's true for both of these. Uh, we have, you see where it has this member underscore number? This is the same as putting in your uh, your Young Living member number. Uh, however, the product, if we scroll back a little further, you'll see is actually US English, right? So what you would want to do is go to the Young Living website and grab the link for your market, right? For, for product. Uh, for this product, the Make a Shift Reset Kit, as well as the Ninja Red Loyalty Rewards, go in and create a leaf link. Right? And that's right here. Paste in that Young Living uh, URL to that bundle. Uh, and then it's going to give you a link that you can use to swap out in the URL field right here. Cause this is, again, this is set up for English. So my apologies, didn't clarify that sooner. Uh, if you are in a different market, you will want to make a modification just to these buttons. And that's literally the only thing uh, that you would um, need to do. Cause everything else is, is just set up to go to the 14 day reset site. Because as they mentioned before, really the whole goal of, of all of this is to get people into uh, this uh, community and working together. Denise says that the reset is usually the second Monday of each month. They do have a list of all the reset dates. Awesome. Thank you for sharing that. How to do tags quicker? Can you do tags quicker instead of individually? So um, Zoom user, don't know what your name is. Uh, it depends uh, on, on what your goal is with tags. But generally speaking, if you select the people or the individual uh, that are in your system and you want to give them a new tag, uh, you could certainly go and filter for the existing tag, remove that tag and um, and replace it with a new one. Or you could go into the tags editor and you can change a tag. Uh, so if a tag is maybe misspelled and you want to correct the spelling of it, then you can do that in the tags manager as well. All right. Hi Deb. Okay. You do not have to do that one at a time. No, you would maybe modify your tags one at a time, right? Um, but uh, here, let me show you real quick. If you can tell me Deb, a little bit more about what you're trying to do with tags, then I might be able to give you a clearer answer. But under our contact settings, you can actually go into your contact tags and edit them. So if this crunchy one, I wanted to name something else like leaves or something, then I could certainly do that. And you can do this here. Making tags happens literally anywhere you want to tag somebody. So um, you know, you can create a tag right here, for instance. Right? So yes, you, you create a tag one at a time. That's right. But you don't have to apply it to each contact individually one at a time. Right? Uh, so yeah, that's really all you have to do. So if, if you want to create a tag, the easiest thing to do, uh, let's just say for instance, you want to, oh, with your members? No. So what you're going to do is you're going to follow the steps that are in our support article for importing your members, right? And you're going to re-import your members multiple times because your members, you know, their, their information changes, whether or not their own loyalty rewards, uh, you know, whether or not they've enrolled somebody, et cetera. So um, so you're going to do a new import uh, from the virtual office. And when you do that import, you're going to add a tag or use a tag that you already have created. And that tag is going to apply to all 700 of those members or, you know, 698 if two are out or, you know, 725, 25 new people joined because they found out about the reset, right? So just follow what's here and you can apply uh, a tag to everyone, even if you already have them in your system. Because again, if you've uploaded your VO file once, you're going to need to do it again. That's not a, it's not a continuous back and forth between the VO and Get Oiling. Uh, you want to, especially if you've got a larger team, like it sounds like you do Deb. Uh, if you have a larger team, you want to be doing your import once a week. And if you have an even larger team, you know, if you're diamond, for instance, you may want to be doing this twice a week or even once a day. If your team is actively growing and you are actively sending out, you know, communications on a regular basis. So. Okay, good. Glad we could help. And um, thanks for, for that question. Awesome. Thank you guys for being here today. We so love being able to help you do what you do. Uh, we will be back here same time next week. In the meantime, fourteen day dash reset.com. Go take advantage of that incredible resource that's been made for you. Uh, for clarity, Sean, uh, we invite people to the 14 day reset uh, website, or if you claim the resource bundle, you can share that page from the resource bundle uh, to the people that you want to share with. And that will still send them to the 14 day reset website where they're able to join Facebook or uh, the Facebook group, or they're able to hop into the 14 day reset vault. All right. Have a great week, everybody. We'll see you next time.